Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting of February 28, 2012. We have been in closed session for the purposes of approval of the 125 and 214 closed session minutes, student residency matters, and collective negotiations. I would note that there are seven board members present; none are absent. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item on our agenda tonight is student recognition. Mr. Prunell.
So with that, I'm going to turn over to Bill, and Bill, you can explain the special award year here tonight.
Good evening. Let's first, let's have, before I get into what I need to say, let's have all our students that are being recognized tonight come on forward and just kind of go across the front They're very experienced performers, so I know they're going to be able to do this very, very easily. It's my honor and pleasure this evening to introduce and recognize 21 outstanding York High School musicians who've been recognized by the state as being all-state musicians for the 2011-2012 school year. The organization that's responsible for bestowing this honor is named the Illinois Music Educators Association, or IMEA, and it's no small feat for any student that earns this all-state distinction. Before we go a little further, I would also like to recognize our faculty from York High School, music faculties here tonight. If you could stand as well, Mr. Whit Blackhall, Mr. Chris Gemco, Mrs. Becky Marionetti, Mr. Ray Oswell, Mr. Mike Pavlik, and I'd also like to recognize our colleagues from the middle schools and elementary schools in our unit district. It's truly a team effort to see these students from early on in their career until this culminating event in high school. I'd like to talk just a little bit about what IMEA is. It's a professional organization with the mission to promote lifelong music learning and to provide leadership for music education. The process for students to get to where they're standing tonight begins in October, and actually it begins before that in terms of their preparation for the audition process, which is in October. This happens, but the actual audition happens in October all over the state of Illinois, where these students individually audition on a set of predetermined music and technical exercises. The state is actually divided into nine different districts, with York High School being a member of District One, which is actually one of the largest and most competitive districts in our state. In District One alone, there's approximately 3,000 students from 75 different schools that audition for the honor of being selected into all district band, jazz ensemble, orchestra, or choir. And there's also students that submit musical compositions and arrangements from all over the state as well. Those are not performing groups at the state level, but they nevertheless can earn that distinction of being all-state, and they also go with us down to Peoria to be part of a showcase event, students, and we have two of those students recognized tonight for their compositions. This year, we were well represented at the district level. We actually had 44 students recognized at the district level, which, again, it happens in the fall, that's in November, and that has spread across those groups of orchestra, band, and choir. After the All District Festival in November, which is actually a concert, it's a day of rehearsal and an afternoon, late afternoon concert with guest directors in each of these groups. After that takes place in the fall, then students have the opportunity to be considered for all-state recognition, which is based on their original, for instrumentalists, it's based on their original audition process, where they score in relation to students all over the state. And in the choral program, there also is, there is a callback audition as well that is used to determine their statewide ranking. After the All District Festival, the students receiving the highest scores in each of the nine districts are selected to participate in the All-State Music Festival. That actually took place last month in Peoria. Again, that seems to be the center of the musical universe in late January. And that, again, is similar in the way that the District Festival works, although that's a three-day event where students are rehearsing with students from all over the state, culminating in a concert on Saturday in the Civic Center in Peoria, again, for each of those groups, for orchestra, band, jazz ensemble, and choral groups. We would like to make one additional mention this year, too. We had a special recognition for one of our students, Michael St. Peter, who was also recognized for, his audition earned him actually to be one of the two, I believe, singers in the entire state to be able to perform the National Anthem coming up next, this, next month, March 17th, for the 4A basketball playoffs. And that was due to his, again, for his audition that he had in the fall originally, and then a callback audition, and then actually another callback audition. So we had that honor for him, again, the very first time that's happened for a student at York High School, and that's quite an additional honor. I'd like you to join me in congratulating these students for their outstanding accomplishments and their talent and their willingness and ability to take this from, actually going back in all these cases, eight or nine, 10 years, and then culminating in this wonderful achievement this past month. Let's give them all a round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle. We appreciate the background. It's quite a process that these students go through, starting really in the fourth grade. We are so happy you're here tonight. We're happy that your parents came as well. We are pleased, so pleased, to recognize your accomplishments and to recognize that you are, in fact, among the finest musicians in high school in the state of Illinois. From time to time, the music department prints an anonymous discourse on the backs of their programs, and it's titled, "Why We Teach Music." And I'd just like to read you a few bits of it. You've probably heard this 100 times, just bear with me. If you're interested, you can find the whole thing. If you Google "that's why we teach music," you'll get the whole thing. It begins by describing in some detail all of the various disciplines that music employs. Music is a science, a foreign language, music is mathematical, it is history, and physical education. But most of all, music is an art, allowing human beings to take dry, difficult, boring techniques and use them to create emotion. And that is why we teach music. Not because we expect you to major in music, not because we expect you to play or sing all of your life, not so you can relax, and certainly not so that you can have fun, but so you will be human, so you will recognize beauty, so you will have more compassion, more gentleness, more goodness, in short, more life. This piece ends, "Of what value will it be to make a prosperous living unless you know how to live?" And that is why we, in District 205, teach music, and we are pleased and proud that you have worked so hard to learn it and to excel. I know it's hard work. I have a musician in my family. This achievement of yours represents years of practice, private lessons, and many auditions added to your already full schedules. Tonight, we want to recognize you for all of that hard work and your accomplishments. I have a proclamation to read. Whereas the Illinois Music Educators Association, known as IMEA, competitions have become the most prestigious statewide student recognition program in music education, whereas high school musicians undergo stringent auditions competing against students from one of nine individual IMEA districts, followed by the qualifying students earning a place in that district's honor ensemble, from which the all-state musicians are chosen, thus representing some of the best musicians in the state. And whereas, this program encourages excellence on the part of individual students and encourages further music study and artistry. And whereas, York Community High School students, and I'm going to read your names slowly, and I'd like you just to step forward so people know who you are. Abigail Arnold, bassoon.
She's missing.
Anne Mae Giordano, soprano voice. Nathan Gornick, clarinet. Gretchen Hedrick, alto voice. Helen Knudsen, soprano voice. Haley Cost, clarinet. Timothy McDonne, composition. William McGing, double bass, jazz. Kathleen McGovern, soprano voice. Caitlin McManus, alto voice. Kyle Metters, composition. James Mueller, tenor voice. Madeline Muir, violin. Brianna Murray, soprano voice. Julia Oliver, soprano voice. Michael Patino, trumpet. Keith Perchala, double bass. Kelsey Roberts, alto voice. Elena Schwartz, clarinet. Michael St. Peter, tenor voice, soon-to-be-heard singing the National Anthem. Emily Udenberg, soprano voice. These students were awarded all-state recognition in their particular musical specialty at the January 25th through 28th, 2012 Illinois Music Educators All-State Convention Festival in Peoria, Illinois. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students and their teachers for this outstanding accomplishment. One more hand. I have copies of the proclamation for you and your faculty, and I have copies of it for each of the students. And if you could shake all these board members' hands on your way out, it'd be great. So apparently, I don't need to tell you that you're welcome to leave at this time, and you are also welcome to stay. We appreciate your coming. We appreciate all of your hard work and all of the support of your parents and teachers as well.
If I could just add, Bill and the music department and the teachers who are part of this, I want to thank you for your dedicated efforts on behalf of these students. You really inspire them to continue with music, with the performing arts. And as much as this country talks about academic achievement, I think the arts are equally important, and you guys are great advocates for that. So thank you for what you do every day of really inspiring these students.
The next item on our agenda this evening is public comments. No one has indicated their wish to address the board verbally this evening, so we will go on to superintendent's communication. Mr. Prunell.
Yeah, just a little change this evening, and you will see on our agenda, you will see tonight a list of Freedom of Information requests that the school district has received. This is a change in procedure for what we have done in the past. In the past, we have posted verbatim all of our FOIA requests out to the public. When I came here and saw the practice, I had some questions about the privacy rights of individuals who are making the FOIA request and whether or not they realize that we were posting personal information as part of their FOIA request to the public. And what I found out was, we were not. That led me to call our legal department and ask them, is that a practice that we should continue? Was there something else we should be doing? And legal came back to us and said, really, you do need to really watch out for the privacy rights of individuals who are making the privacy requests and who submits a FOIA request to the school district. And so legal, there is no requirement that we post the requests. The only provision by the school code is that the president or district superintendent shall, at each regular meeting, report any request made of the district under the provision of the Freedom of Information Act, and shall report the status of the district response. That is all that is required by law. Legal said, better practice just to do this in a public meeting and list those for the public and the Board of Education. So that's what you will see tonight on this agenda item. We're not going to post the requests, but we will announce that there were two requests received from commercial purposes, and we granted those FOIA requests. We received one for personnel records, and that was denied, and one was received regarding school facilities, and that one we granted. And so this will be a regular item on the board meeting to fulfill our FOIA requests, but again, not to reveal the privacy rights of an individual.
Any questions about that? Next item is the Race to the Top.
Yes, as you probably already know, the state of Illinois was one of the states that was selected and applied for Race to the Top Three funding from the federal government. That request was approved by the federal government, and the state of Illinois is going to receive $47 million from the federal government for Race to the Top Three. However, half of that funding will go to the state for state purposes, of which there will be $27 million left to distribute to local school districts. One of the things in Race to the Top, as you remember from Race to the Top One and Race to the Top Two, there were a number of requirements that school districts were going to be required to do in order to fulfill an application, in order to be eligible to be even considered for Race to the Top funding. We went to, we looked at the requirements of Race to the Top Three. Charles Sprandell had went to the podcast, had reviewed the podcast that was presented at the state of Illinois, came back and reported on what those requirements are. What's important to remember on the $27 million is it will be distributed based on Title I eligibility. And so the most neediest districts, the most meanest schools, will get the bigger percentage of the funding from the state government. And so, and one of the speculations is if the Chicago Public Schools applies for this, they would take up as much as half of the funding out of the $27 million that would go to Chicago Public Schools if they choose to apply. We do not know if they choose to apply, but even without Chicago Public Schools funding, we are not one of the high-risk districts by definition under Title I. So the funding mechanism, it really is at a disadvantage for a district like Elmhurst, who has a low free and reduced lunch count, and that is how the Title I funding is calculated. As we went through and started talking about what the requirements are for Race to the Top Three, one of the huge issues that came forward immediately was our requirement that we would have to agree to integrate our database to the Illinois Shared Learning Environment, which is an online data collection from the state of Michigan that collects individual student data and assessment data and testing data for every student in our district, and uploads that to the state of Illinois, to their, the Shared Learning Environment program. That would require us, we do not have right now the capacity to do that, both in manpower and in hardware-software technology. One of the things that I know the district has talked about in the past is a data warehouse. Data warehouse is going to run us anywhere from $250,000 to $400,000, depending on the details of all of that. And we know that we are not going to get that kind of funding back from Race to the Top grants. Lion Township, for example, has figured out that of similar demographics to us, and they calculated they would get about $20,000 in RTT3 funding, if they do all of that. That's not the only requirement. We also have to implement a standard-based reporting system in math, ELL, and science. We're not positive what that is. We would also have to adopt a different comprehensive school and district continuous improvement plan and process. Now, this, we already have the new report card. Now, we would have to adopt another system, and it's either Rising Star, which has been adopted by the state, or an equivalent, although they haven't defined what that equivalent would be. So in effect, our whole improvement process would have to come to a halt. We would have to wait and get a definition of what the new improvement process would be, and then try to move forward for applying for that grant. And so, and there's another, and I detailed that in my presentation, my memo to the Board of Education. Given all of those factors and the return on the investment that we would have to invest in this district for Race to the Top Three funding, the administration is not recommending that we apply for Race to the Three funding at this time. We just do not think the manpower, the effort, the amount of investment we would have to make in this system really pays off. I will say the other thing, too, a lot of this is still undefined as to exactly what you would be required to do. It's still being talked about by the Illinois State Board of Education. There's still new definitions that have to be published, but the timeline is very, very tight. You would have to have your application request in by March 1st, and we just don't think it's a practical solution for Elmhurst, for our school district at this time. So that is the recommendation from the administration that we not pursue the grant at this time.
Any questions on Race to the Top Three? Ms. Hirsch.
Mr. Prunell, I, this was presented to us, I think, in committee. We kind of reviewed at a high level what the requirements were going to be. I concur that, I don't know that it's worth a bang for the buck, the amount of work that we would have to do, but I do want to point out, we do have a number of these initiatives already underway, and we believe in those initiatives. I just want to kind of recap. It doesn't mean that we're not committing to looking at data, using data for assessment, using data for instruction and evaluations, and the things that are the good components that we're trying to implement. It's just that we are choosing not to tie our hands to the state's model at this point in time. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I do want to say that some of the requirements we're already in the process of doing, we are moving forward on some of the very things that they're suggesting school districts do, and so a lot of that, we are already doing. I think the biggest factor for us, for me anyway, is the data warehouse piece and what that investment would be in order to commit to Illinois Shared Learning Environment program. I think that's financially, in these financial times, very, very difficult to come up with that kind of funding, especially not knowing exactly how much you're going to get, but I would be surprised if it came close to the investment we would have to make in that system. And once you commit, you're committed to that commitment.
Anybody else, questions or comments about Race to the Top? Ms. Stufan.
Just a quick comment from the recent Lend meeting that I'm a representative of from District 205 is, it's more than likely that CPS will get their fair share, if you will, which is a significant portion of those funds. So that is something to note for us.
Certainly sounds like it was crafted to reduce the number of applicants.
Yeah, it does make you wonder, especially, you know, with Chicago. If Chicago does take half of that funding, there is very little left statewide that would make a significant difference in how districts are going to go about this. And, you know, districts have been burned before by Race to the Top One, Race to the Top Two. There was funding required or requested, didn't get the funding, and it still had all the requirements that come forward, so it's problematic.
Moving on, we will move to the approval of board meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of January 25th or February 14th? Ms. Hirsch.
Yeah, on the January 24th minutes, I think, Mrs. Welsh, you were thinking that I was still running that meeting, but actually, Mrs. DeRoni was running that meeting. There were a couple references to me asking for a summation of the board, so I think there were just two references to, it looked like I was running things, and it was Mrs. DeRoni well in control.
Mr. Collins. While you're looking, I will say that on the minutes of February 14th, under the Board Improvement Policy Committee report, it said that the committee wants to thank people for attending the committee meetings. We would like to begin sending out a thank-you letter. It would come out from the board secretary. And I believe the intent of the board was to say that the committee wants to thank people for attending both regular board meetings and committee meetings, and we would like to begin sending out a thank-you letter from the board secretary. So if you could make that change as well. For commenting at board meetings, yes. Exactly. Thank you. Not just attending, but for speaking up at board, at committee meetings and board meetings. Mr. Collins.
On the January 24th board meeting, in the minutes of the Finance Committee, according to our minutes, I said that we had, I believe, $2.5 million worth of capital projects over the next 10 years. That number is actually in excess of $10 million, and so we could either correct the record to read that, or I think my actual comment was that we saw $2.5 million worth of immediate needs. So at any rate, just to get the facts out there.
This was from the January 24th full board meeting, but it was the report of the Finance Committee section.
Correct.
Any other corrections? Any other corrections or additions to January 24th or February 14th? Hearing none, those minutes will stand approved as corrected. Moving on to board committee reports, we will hear first from Ms. Stufan on the Board Improvement and Policy Committee.
So the Board Improvement and Policy Committee met on February 23rd. We had a resident of Elmhurst provide public comments that was asked to be provided to the full board, and therefore, that was sent to all the board members. Secondly, we talked about policy from several different perspectives. One is, two new policies that we were discussing in the fall. One is two new policies that were, we were discussing in the fall that we revisited, one of which was the new policy on extracurricular activity. I wanted to call to the board's attention that the current, it is the recommendation of the committee that the current policy 6:190 on extracurricular activities really does articulate the, our policy for extracurricular. And we actually did some research from many different districts in the Chicago area, like districts, and it's somewhat similar, and actually, we have a lot more detail, if you will. So I wanted to call, call that to your attention. Also, the new policy on professionalism, we discussed that at, at length and made some modifications. With regard to the policy on press, there, there have been a lot of cross-references, legal and footnote cross-references, and it was eating up a lot of committee time and board members. So what we have, what we discussed at the last committee meeting is that the administration will, will be looking at all the press updates, and when there's a legal or cross-reference, we will not spend a lot of time in committee on those, on those policies. So that will come to us, but it will kind of be a pass-through, if you will. What we will focus on is the policies where there's content changes and there's really, you know, discussion that needs to be lengthier, and then we will bring them to the board. So just so that you are aware of an update on the way that we approach the press updates and kind of sectioning them out. Just a reminder that whenever there is a policy that comes in through press, it is sent to all of the administrate, administrators where that policy, they have ownership, they've divided the policy up into sections, and all the administrators have their, their sections, and therefore, they look at them in detail before it comes to us in, in policy, policy Lastly, we talked about board improvement and community relations. First off, I'll hit the community relations. We talked about the board outreach. We will revisit this again in a little bit more detail, but just so that you are aware, we're, we're kind of entertaining, if you will, and brainstorming two different approaches. What we'd ideally like to do is something like a meet the board, which could be done at 45 minutes before the board meetings. Right now, it's, it is problematic because we have the closed sessions, but, you know, at some point, if we don't have the closed sessions, we'd like to do that. So we're kind of, you know, brainstorming what are other ways to leverage the meetings that are already scheduled and in place throughout the district so that when, when we have commit, when we have community members that want to be present for any one of those regularly scheduled meetings or events, if you will, that we can just open, open up the forum a little bit earlier for anyone to meet a couple of board members, and so that we can stay in touch and have that board outreach. Another thought that we had discussed earlier in the fall was to potentially do something like another community forum, so we'd have, you know, more than one per year. So we're entertaining that as well. With respect to board improvement, we talked about two different pieces, one of which was most important is the board self-assessment survey. We had asked the board, or the board had designated that this committee work on a, a self-assessment survey so that we could assess how well we are performing on our governance priorities that we outlined in our three strategic meetings in June when we became a full board. So we, we discussed and, and liked the survey, and we're going to come back to the full board with, with the plan of the survey as input into the board retreat in June and those sorts of things. Just kind of give you a heads up. Lastly, we wanted to have a little bit more discussion about the board's, let's say advocacy with regard to legislation, since it seems so active lately in education. We didn't get a lot of time to discuss that, that topic at length, so we will cover it at another committee meeting. But just so that you are aware, that one item that hit us last week was the Senate Bill 2073 with regard to EAV, and, and therefore, I will provide a little bit more update with regard to that Senate bill during my Lend update at the end of this, this board meeting so that you are aware of the current status with regard to that. So we wanted to at least, you know, hit that particular Senate bill and legislation that was, was called to our attention for action, kind of spur of the moment, if you will.
Any questions? Ms. Hirsch.
Thanks, Mrs. Stufan, for the update. If I can make a request, when policies come for first reading, for instance, I, I think you've got a new policy that we're looking to come, and I know that we didn't have time to get it on tonight's agenda. I don't believe it's on tonight's agenda, the new policy on professionalism. I think, that's not on tonight's agenda. But when it does come back to the full board for discussion, especially given, I think if we're making a significant change to policy and/or considering a new policy, if that could be located on the agenda, not under consent agenda, if that's actually an agenda item that we, you know, expect and we have either, if it's a significant change to an existing policy that we see, you know, the old policy, the marked-up policy, what, what the changes look like, and in this particular case, we've got a new policy that's created. So if we can have some time carved out on the agenda anticipating, you know, some good board discussion from the full board on those agenda items, I think that would just help us focus our attention on what policies are significantly changing and, or, and/or new versus some minor wording modifications.
Just, just right now, so you know, all new policies do not go on consent. So if it's a new policy, it's automatically a separate agenda item. So the only change here would be the, the definition of significant change to policy going either on a separate agenda or first reading, so.
I'm thinking in particular, the one policy that I think we, we had first reading on that was related to entering school, I, I can't recall the exact title of the policy, which is hard for me to believe that I can't remember the name of the policy. But it was, it was attendance, when we bring students in, transferring. So that was one that I think that we wanted, at the board table last meeting, I think we indicated that we wanted to have some full board discussion or consideration of. So I'm not sure where that comes back. So, you know, to me, that was a significant change.
Ms. Upnow.
Has the full board seen the draft self-assessment survey? And I was just wondering if there's, we can get comments back before our committee meeting at the end of March, March 23rd?
Yeah, the survey was actually on board docs for our last committee meeting. So they were...
The, the committee had said it was going to bring that survey back along with the purpose at the March 20th meeting for the full board review. So that's what the committee decided.
Coming back to the full board...
On March 20th.
Okay, okay, so we're, we're waiting. Okay. Any other questions? Comments? You referenced streamlining the way we handle policies that come from press in order to save time at the committee level because they're, they're just voluminous. Do I understand that we will need to have a new policy on policy whereby we will allow the administration to make such minor changes as legal references and punctuation corrections and things that the press has noticed is wrong with individual policies, but nothing that anybody really needs to noodle about? Is that, is that true?
That is true. So it'd be policy 2:240, and we'll bring that to the next full board meeting. It was with a recommendation of the way that we look at press, we wanted to go to legal to make sure that we were covered, you know, with, with the recommendation. And with that, the, our, our law firm had suggested that we update our current policy 2:240, the board policy development, so that would clearly articulate the new process.
Just to be clear, too, because I don't want any confusion, all policies will still appear before the board for approval. The only difference is it won't take up the committee time on minor document changes. It will just go to first reading automatically. So that's the only change in this.
Thank you for that clarification. In the spirit of Ms. Hirsch's suggestion, do you want to speak to the first reading of the policy that we have in our consent agenda before we get to it? The access to electronic networks, I believe, was, arose out of our Technology Department in light of, I believe, new laws and clarity, and do we have anything else to say on that? It's being written, I believe, along with administrative guidelines that will implement it. Anything else to add on that?
Nothing else to add to what you just said, though.
There was a lot of back and forth with legal to get it exactly right, with filtering and with who's able to do what, and I know you spent quite a bit of time on it, but in the end, it just clarifies practices that are going on, good best practice in the area of electronic networks. It clarifies a lot of the technological jargon so that we're clear about what we're describing, and there's really not a lot of substance to it. It's just cleaning up legally how we want it to read, and that's why it's appearing on the consent agenda tonight.
And good clarification with respect to policy as well as procedure. So there's procedures, detailed procedures in place in the district, and this is just to have the policy be revisited.
Any other questions for Mrs. Stufan? Mr. Collins, Finance and Operations, you're up.
The Finance and Operations Committee held a meeting on February 16th, which lasted, if I recall correctly, in excess of three hours. And I hope to cover the highlights of that for you tonight in a fraction of that time. We had 10 agenda items on our agenda. We were, it was very ambitious, and we got through them. The first was entitled Market Update and Refinancing, or Financing Options. We met with our bond counsel, which is the firm of William Blair, who we've worked diligently with over the past year or so as interest rates have reached historic lows, to see if there was an opportunity to refinance some of the district's debt, just as you would refinance your mortgage. The difference between your mortgage and the district's debt is you can refinance at any time. Of the, of the bond series that are refinancable, at least in part currently, they're not callable until 2016 and 2017, respectively. Without going into a whole lot of detail, it is possible to refinance these today, but we reach a situation that we call neg, that's called negative arbitrage. In other words, we would be paying out more money than we would be taking in on the interest that we could reinvest these proceeds until we could call the bonds. However, it still allows us to save up to a couple of million dollars if we do that. The longer we wait, the more we save, but we're then at the whim of the bond market as to what happens to the general level of interest rates. So the longer we wait, the more risk we take, but possibly the more we could save. So in our next Finance Committee meeting, we'll continue that discussion. We sent William Blair back to run some numbers for us to help us figure out what our options are and the risk that we would take in the market to do so. That money, if we saved it, by the way, is in the, would be going to the capital projects budget and would be a creative way to help replenish, at least in part, some of that budget to pay for needed repairs that we have over the next several years. The second item was facility usage fees. Even though we increased facility usage fees, and, and these are the fees that we charge outside, outside groups to use our gymnasium, our pool, our classrooms, our football field, et cetera. Even though we've raised those usage fees pretty dramatically within the last two years, because the previous, up until a couple of years ago, we were using a 1982 fee schedule. But even with the increased fees, Mr. Welton took a good look, and Mr. Purnow took a good look at what our actual costs are, and we discovered that we're not even covering our actual costs. So in this past, in this past Finance Committee meeting and in the next meeting, we'll be discussing in further, in further detail what our costs actually are. Our plan then is to ask the groups that rent our facilities from us to come in and have a discussion with them about what our costs actually are, what their budgeting cycle is, and just to listen to our community as to their needs and also meet our needs and that we're basically have been subsidizing the, these outside groups. We intend, we don't intend to make a profit off of this. We intend to merely cover our costs. The third item was budget parameters for 2012, 2013. We took a look at next year's budget and the assumptions we're making in the budget, and right now, we're projecting revenues to be between about $600,000 and $1 million short of what our projected expenses will be next year. We've tasked the administration with the job of proposing actions to balance next fiscal year's budget, and we will be discussing those at our next Finance Committee meeting, at least in the first phase. And then that will eventually come to the entire board. We also discussed the Budget at a Glance publication, which Mr. Welton and Ms. Smith have worked very hard on. We took a look at it. It's, the intent is to give the community an idea of where the district's revenues come from, what we spend our money on, take a look at, at all of those sources and uses of funds, that our budget is balanced, and I, I think it gives the community a, just a clearer look at, at the financial picture of the district. We reviewed it, we've made some edits to it. Mr. Welton and Malia Smith are going back and making those edits, and that will appear on our website as soon as they're done. We then also took a look at our long-term vehicle replacement plan, which I think, well, among other reasons, was spurred by another unfunded mandate in front of the General Assembly in the Legislature of the state of Illinois that proposes that drivers' ed cars that are more than five years old or with more than 75,000 miles be inspected yearly by the Illinois Department of Transportation, with the idea being that districts replace their drivers' ed cars more often. And just to give you an idea of what our fleet, what our fleet of drivers' ed cars look like, our newest is a Toyota Prius purchased in 2009. Our oldest is a, is a Ford Taurus purchased in 1999. And there are six cars ranging in that age total. That, we, we do also continue to use our retired drivers' ed cars in our Buildings and Grounds Departments, and that fleet currently has four cars that were 1997 model year. That then made us take a look at our bus replacement schedule. Now, the yellow, the big yellow school buses you see driving around, around town are contracted through a private contractor, but the district owns a small fleet of mini buses, the activity buses that the schools drive around. And the majority of those were 19, or I'm sorry, 2001 model year, so they're 10 years old this year. We put together, or Mr. Welton, I should say, put together a replacement schedule for those buses, and the, we're going to try to buy one bus a year over the next several years. The last of those six buses would be replaced in 2018 when that vehicle is 17 years old. I guess that's another discussion, whether I want my kid being driven around in a 17-year-old And then we took, also took a look at maintenance truck replacement, and just to give you an idea, we have one 2010 vintage vehicle, and those span all the way back to 1995 vintage vehicles that are still in use by the district. To say that some of these older vehicles are in poor condition would be an understatement. So at any rate, we're trying to get our house in order, to come up with a logical, safe vehicle replacement schedule that is a little more frequent than what the district has packed. practiced in the past. Our next item was our capital projects proposed for the summer of 2012. And just the highlights would be regrout the York Pool, which is leaking, inspection of roofs and make sure we don't have any leaking roofs district-wise, the inspection and evaluation of York and Hawthorne's building envelope. And you think, boy, those two buildings are two newest in the district, but we've already discovered some deterioration at York, to remind you that not all of York is as new as the most recent addition. And then to do some, some serious rebuilding work to our, our air conditioning system at York and tuck point parts of Lincoln School, and make sure the air is not coming through the bricks. Our next agenda item was the review of our external auditor contract. We've been using this auditor, Mr. Welton, correct me if I'm wrong, please, for the last three years. Okay. And auditors propose that we continue the use of this particular auditor. The administration's feeling is they have done a very good job for us. They've submitted a proposal that would take their current contract, which is about $24,000 a year, and for the next three years, increase it gradually to about $25,000 a year. The administration feels that our current auditor provides us with good value, is very thorough, understands the district, and is our lowest cost option at this point. Our next agenda item was the YSET mid-year review. The folks that run the YSET group, which is the group that has raised money to pay some of the fees at York High School, was kind enough to share with us their mid-year report. They've done some great work for our most needy students to help them pay for books and fees at York High School. This year, they've distributed about $35,000 so far, and they anticipate continuing demand by our needy students that attend York. And they've done some, some great work by making sports, books, and activities at York affordable for everyone. We also then went through our monthly financial reports, and this is the second to the last item. We continue to be on track and on budget, and the wild card remains whether the state of Illinois will pay us what they owe us, what they promised us, in a timely fashion. And we continue to monitor that closely. And then the final item, I think Ms. Stufan talked about a little as well, this seems to be discussed in many committees, is the proposals of the employer contribution to the teachers' retirement system. Currently, our employees contribute nine and a half percent. Our teachers contribute nine and a half percent to their pension fund. The district contributes approximately one-half of one percent to that fund. And each of the last two years, the Illinois income taxpayer has contributed 23% of our teachers' salaries to that fund. Now, in the legislature, there is a lot of talk about gradually, or in stages, transferring the financial burden of funding the teachers' pension fund completely to the local district. That's at various stages, with various opinions of how successful it's going to be, but that is just an item that we're watching and monitoring closely. And that's all I have.
Any questions for the Finance and Operations Committee? Ms. Hirsch.
This is actually directed both at Mr. Collins and Mr. Purno. In the last two years, we have had to make significant budget cuts, as, Mr. Collins, you've been sitting here with me, as we've had to make multimillion-dollar budget cuts the last two years.
And it has not been a lot of fun.
Correct. But we've used two different approaches in the last two years to try to come up with what the targets were for reductions. And those were recommendations coming from the administration in, using different techniques, I would say, in terms of targeting budget areas for budget cuts. And those decisions on which cuts to make and, you know, how to move forward, both in terms of the dollar amount that we want to cut, that we're okay with cutting, as well as how those cutbacks were going to be distributed across our educational program, were decided at the board table. So I would like to better understand a little bit about what we view our process to be. I think in committee, there was a discussion of a specific target amount. I think that target amount, you know, we need to talk about that a little bit at the full board table and have an update from the administration on our projected revenue stream, our projected expenses, and, you know, how we came up with that initial number, and discuss at the full board table what we would like to see the approach moving forward for those kind of discussions and how we would identify areas to make reductions. I guess it's a little bit different approach, and I'd like to kind of talk about it at the board table and understand some of the thinking.
Chris, you want to go through and talk briefly about how we're going to determine formally the PMA projections and all of that?
We plan to have PMA come to the next Finance Committee, March 8th, to go through with the Finance Committee, the assumptions made in their five-year projections, and then have PMA come to the board after, with those assumptions in place, then to do a presentation of the five-year projections. And that will include the projection for the 2012-13 year, in which we are starting to discuss that budget now.
And simultaneously with that, or closely following then, when the board has established that this is the target for the budget reduction, that we're going to have to target for this coming school year, whatever that number is, then the following board meeting, we will come back administratively with a list of possible budget cuts or other options that the board can discuss as to the direction of where we want to go to balance the budget for next year, use the budget fund equity, or what kind of reductions would be options for the Board of Education, along with the recommendation from the administration of where we think we should go. And that, that would be then, the board discussion, along with the public, to decide what options the board's comfortable with in moving forward with budget reductions, depending on the scope, depending on the target, depending on where we're going.
I guess I want to communicate that I think some, I think the committee structure is a very good structure for us. I think we're making a lot of progress. We're cutting, working through many of the concerns and issues that we have as a board, things that we need to pay close attention to. But I am personally concerned about the transparency, and I think that on this particular topic, this is a full board discussion on, and the full board should sit through the update with PMA and see the financial picture. And this, I'm not comfortable with sitting at the committee level. I think this is a full board discussion, both in terms of the financial situation and in terms of transparency, having it be on camera and available to the public, as well as the discussion about, you know, how we come up with the recommendations for cuts. I don't know how other board members feel, but given where we've been the last two years, when we've made significant cuts, it's a very public process. It's been painful. It's not a pleasant process to go through, but I do think that it deserves to come to the full board table. I'd be interested in hearing other board members' thoughts.
Well, just for clarification, the PMA projection will come to the full board on March 20th. So that projection can be, that's for board discussion on the 20th. So, and again, if the, if the board is not comfortable with the assumptions that come forward from PMA, those can be changed. But we have to have a starting point of what assumptions we're going to be used to build that budget. But that will come to the full board on March 20th. So there will be opportunity for board members to discuss the assumptions, the projections, what the target is, whether you agree with the target or not. And then, moving from there, then the following meeting, begin to discuss the options for the budget reduction, if we need to have budget reductions for next year.
Any other questions or comments for the Finance and Operations Committee? I just wanted to point out, one of the things that Mr. Collins talked about was this Budget at a Glance material that Mr. Welton and his department have put together. It is going to go on the website. It's a very good booklet. Over the years, we've done, tried all different kinds of ways to get financial information out and understood by the community. This is very comprehensive. It starts out with budget highlights, talks about revenue and property taxes. It goes into enrollment history and projections. And it talks about where we actually spend all these dollars in our district and exactly why we're looking at a shortfall yet again. Gives all of those reasons. It talks about academic awards and achievements. It was clearly a lot of work, and I'd like to thank the Finance and Operations Department for putting this together. It'll be a piece that we're going to take with us, pardon me, and Malia, oh, Malia, did I forget you? I'm so sorry. Everybody who had a part in this, named or unnamed, I'd like to express my appreciation to. It's a great piece. It's got a lot of information in it. As I said, it's going to be something that we will be able to use on the road. It'll be available on the website for anyone who wants a clear understanding of what the financial picture of the district actually looks like. Moving on, we will go to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of our personnel report, financial reports, we have the acceptance of some generous donations from the Jefferson and Conrad Fisher Schools. We have a donation of dictionaries to third-grade students. We have the approval of the Access to Electronic Networks first reading of that policy as well. Does anyone wish to remove an item for discussion from our consent agenda? Ms. Hirsch.
I'd like to remove Item D.
Item D, the acceptance of the donation from the Conrad Fisher School. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Item D? Moved by Ms. Hirsch, seconded by Mrs. Ebner, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of Item D. Mrs. Walsh, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Droni?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Is there a motion to approve Item D, acceptance of the donation Conrad Fisher Elementary School? Ms. Hirsch.
I move that the Board of Education accept the donation of six $499 monthly checks, totaling $2,994, with the intention of purchasing an iPad with each of the checks. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 8:80, Gifts to the District.
Moved by Ms. Hirsch, seconded by Mr. McDonough. Is there any discussion? Ms. Hirsch.
This is an unusual donation for us, as I've been on the board. This is the first time that we've received a donation like this, and I didn't want to just pass it by through the consent agenda. Our rationale, which is posted on our website, I just wanted to read it, and to the record, Conrad Fisher School has been very fortunate in that they have become the benefactor of a very generous individual. Mrs. Mary Ann Wagner of Bend, Oregon, saw a Chicago Tribune article related to the improved test scores at Conrad Fisher School, and she wanted to make a difference. She's contacted Mrs. Jane Bailey, our principal at Conrad Fisher, and generously offered to donate $499 a month for a six-month period for a total of $2994. And it was left to Mrs. Bailey's discretion how to use the money, and it's the intent to use each of these checks to purchase an iPad to be used throughout the school as needed to address student learning needs. This is just an incredible donation. We've all seen, there are websites, donors choose, there are opportunities for individuals that are out in the public to donate to public education. I think, I had to review for myself, I went back and clicked through and checked out the Chicago Tribune article again, and it was very, a great celebration of the great progress that we have made at Conrad Fisher School with our students. And I just think that, thank you, Mrs. Mary Ann Wagner of Bend, Oregon. It's amazing the reach of what happens with the Internet and how people are exposed and paying attention to what's going on in education. And this is, I think, just good news all the way around. So thank you, Mrs. Bend. Thank you to Mrs. Bailey and her team at Conrad Fisher, and the great improvements that we've been seeing at Fisher.
Thanks for that explanation. Any other discussion? Motion on the floor is to accept a donation to Conrad Fisher School. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. That motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the announcement of upcoming meetings. We have a number of committee meetings scheduled. We have the Curriculum and Instruction Meeting on March 7th, Finance and Operations on March 8th, with a new earlier starting time, since the agendas seem to be prohibitive. We have the Performance Management Committee on March 15th, and the Board Improvement Policy Committee on March 21st. All the others meet at 7:00. And we have our regularly scheduled full board meeting on March 20th at 7:30 here at the district center. Next item on our agenda is the action out of closed session. Both of these matters have been withdrawn this evening, and there is actually no action coming out of closed session. Board communications, is there anyone who wishes to share things with the board? Ms...
Yes, I wanted to provide an update to the board members with regard to the last Lend meeting that Chris Welton and I attended on behalf of District 205. Several different items. First off, they articulated to us the governor's proposed agenda, which really says that the education dollars stay the same. They really hit the pension reform topic because it is happening, whether we like it or not. So basically, they said Governor Quinn, Speaker Madigan, and President Colleton all agree that there will be pension reform this session. The governor's working group has been directed to report out by April 20, or, excuse me, April 17th. So this is moving fast and furious. Governor Quinn said everything's on the table, historical funding practices, employer-employee contributions, retirement age, cost of living adjustments. What we were told is to project, that the districts are to project 8.9% of their payroll. This will be over a long period of time, but it's yet to be determined. I know that we all have been actively looking and keeping our eye to the ground on this issue since it came, since it came up in the state within the last several weeks. They are saying five to 10 years, but what I had heard at Lend is they're going to recommend 15, and you know negotiations go on. So just so that everyone understands, that's what's being discussed, and I thought that it was important for us to understand that, because it's huge implications for us. As Mr. Collins said at the last meeting, it could, you know, it's catastrophic for a lot of districts. So we really need to understand what's happening. And once again, thank you very much for the financial budget at a glance, which helps us wrap our arms around all the finances within the district and all the things, the balls that we're juggling to try to keep ourselves financially healthy, because that has been our history. The governor's push is threefold: early childhood, MAP grants, and compulsory age. With regard to the Senate Bill 2073, which is the Frank's Bill, with regard to holding property tax extensions to zero if we experience a decrease in EAV. Everyone knows, because we were called to action last week, it's, actually, what was called to action, or called in the legislation, was really Amendment 6, which was Senate sponsor Link. He has assured Lend, and therefore us, that it's not going to be called. However, there is a related Senate bill, which is 2862. Sandoval has given the word that he's not going to call it. It appears to be a political piece for taxpayers, for people who are running in the election, want to have the taxpayers understand that they are not going to increase property taxes. So just a little bit of background information that we were provided. Lend will watch this very closely until the committee deadline, which is March 9th. And at that point, if it's not called, then it will be considered dead, just so that you have a clear update. There are two other Senate bills that I thought we should be aware of. One is 3244, which is high school One is 3244, which is high school graduation requirements, and this is upcoming Senate bills of interest. And that is high school graduation requirements of four years of math, instead of three, for ninth, the 2012-2013 ninth grade class and up. Senate Bill 3299, which is a Lightford-sponsored bill, increases the compulsory school age from 17 to 18. So those are the two bills that have not gone through legislation, but they will be called in legislation, just FYI. With regard to federal relations update, AYP is moving to something called Multi-Measure Index. It really focuses on closing the achievement gap. So if you're keeping in touch with what's going on in Washington, we have heard that, you know, the push is to close the achievement gap. What they're really saying their objective is, with this Multi-Measure Index, and this federal initiative, is a 50% decrease in the achievement gap over six years. The three particular index areas that they're looking at is outcomes, progress, and environment. That's with regard to legislation. I know that every, you want to say?
The last thing you're talking about is what's a proposed fix in Congress? Or did you outline the state waiver that the State of Illinois had applied for?
No, it's not the state waiver. It's just giving you an update with regard to what is being discussed at the federal level.
Oh, so those are discussions for changes, legislative changes to No Child Left Behind, is that right?
Correct. But just so that you know what's being discussed. I know that everyone had received the invitation for Save the Date, which is a Lend Dinner and Dialogue with regard to the pension reform topic. So what I wanted to highlight is that it is twofold. One is there's a keynote speaker, Mr. James Farrell, who is the Chairman of the Civic Committee, and then after that, there's going to be a panel discussion with representatives from business, union leadership, legal administration, and legislation. The whole point here is that there's a lot of different perspectives here that needs to have a very healthy dialogue. And that's why Lend is sponsoring this Dinner and Dialogue, that we are all invited to. That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Hirsch?
I want to pick up on, tell me that Mr. McDonough said, on a related note, that Illinois is submitting its waiver to the feds for how we're going to work around the No Child Left Behind mandates, and work through, work around, to try to come up with a reasonable approach to ensuring that we are providing a good, solid education and seeing growth for all of our students, which is our goal, which I think nobody questions what we're trying to accomplish for our kids. The question is, how are we going to be measured by external forces? So, I guess, you know, Mr. Purno, I know that we didn't prepare this, but it's something, I think the state was submitting our application for a waiver today. I think we got some kind of preview as to what the state was looking to approve, but I think it's something that, it's going to be our accountability measure, I believe, moving forward. And so it's clearly something that we're going to have to, I don't think it's going to be simple. I think it's going to be a little complex to try to apply it, to see how we're going to turn, how this is going to come out for us, and what our energies need to go into to ensure that we're making good progress. So whether it goes to the Curriculum Committee, whether it goes to, you know, somebody, I think it would be helpful, you know, to track that, and once it is approved by the federal government, that we start to understand and take a look at what that's going to mean to us in terms of accountability, testing, those kind of things.
Yeah, we have been tracking that waiver and what changes they are requesting. So I think Charles can do a presentation of the Curriculum Committee, send it to the full Board on what that, at least right now, tentatively looks like with their application that was put in today. A lot of requirements for the new report card coming out that I think are reflective of that waiver. Probably the biggest issue is the growth of individual students being tracked over time, and how that's going to work. They have a model that, while it has merit, it's very, very complicated. And so, we are waiting to see how this would roll out, what the implications are, and just have some time to study it, because it's a pretty complicated process. I don't know, Charles, if you have anything else?
They've suggested that they come up with what's called a value-added table, in which we rank a student's performance at the beginning of a year, and then measure it again at the end of the year, and based on how much the student grows, we get a points, a set of points for each student, and then we have to add up all those points, and then tell us how we're doing as a district. Modeling this so that we could see how we're doing on a regular basis, just doing that alone seems to be overwhelming, but we'll have to see what evolves.
Ms. Hirsch?
I had one other request. The Performance Management Committee, we gave our update at the last Board meeting from the results of our committee meeting, and I think we had communicated to Board members what the 10 categories of district performance indicators were, and I think we had kind of pieced out the areas. And just a request to the committee chairs, that we make sure that on the March agendas, we carve out some time in those busy agendas to review those district performance indicators, and that the administrative team members have provided those to the Board, so we can look at those, think about those, talk about those, and get them all back to the Performance Management Committee, so we can map them all out. So, just take a look at your agendas and don't forget those DPIs.
One question for you, Mrs. Stufan. Did I hear you say that the legislators are talking about returning 8.9% of individual school district payrolls pensions back to the district to fund over the course of X number of years?
That's exactly what they're talking about.
It's an annual number.
Say that, no, 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 no.
It's an annual number.
What they're saying is, given your payroll, here's just a projected number that we're going, we're throwing out there that's being discussed, is 8.9%.
That we'd have to pick up every year?
And then, what they're going to do is, it's going to be what they'll call a phase-in, you know, so it won't be initially one year, you've got to pick up all those dollars. But yes, that's what they're talking about.
The ultimate goal would be, as I understand, is the 8.9 would be the end percentage they would like to get to for all districts. The question seems to be, is that a five-year period, 10-year period, or 15-year period? But let's say it's a 10-year period. They would incrementally increase that percentage every year over those 10 years, so that at the end, the districts would end up paying 8.9% toward the retirement system out of our salary. So, for every dollar we pay in salary, at the end of that 10-year period, if that's the model, you would pay 8.9 cents toward the retirement system. Chris has already figured out that for every percentage, it's $500,000 out of our budget, Chris?
Yes.
So for every percentage that, we're going to be, if that comes to fruition, for every percentage that we pay into the retirement system, that's a $500,000 hole in our budget that we're going to have to make up. So, projecting over a 10-year period, you're almost looking at 1% per year, and so we would have $500,000 continuing to compound.
Is there, is that a change in lieu of looking at anything on the revenue side to make it up? Just stretching things out longer over time?
They have talked about allowing districts, and I don't know, allowing districts to go for referendums to cover this, but that's been very, very briefly discussed about how they would give options to school districts to at least make up some of the shortfall. But, somebody's going to pay for this. I mean, there's no, you know, they know they don't have the funding, they know the pension problems are huge, and I think they're tentatively looking at solutions. And, you know, you all know how the legislatures in any state works. This is a negotiating process, so you start with a number, and you start negotiating it. I think the important thing to look for in this, though, do they establish that now there is an escalating scale of some kind that is going to require districts to start paying into the pension fund? And once you establish that, then, in my experience, that percentage somehow is voted in and increased every year to cover the shortfalls on a pension system. And that's the precedent that you start getting into with that. Chris?
Yeah, and my understanding, if you look, the Illinois taxpayer contribute is 23% now, and they're going to ask us to pick up, you know, 9%. I think that's an attempt to get at not making the problem any worse, so trying to get us to pick up the annual ongoing cost. That does nothing to solve the $43 billion underfunding problem that they have. And so, that 23% that they contribute was intended in part to cover current, but a lot of that was going towards trying to fill that gap. So another question is, is just how much of that underfunding, are they also going to, over time, once they get us used to paying more, shift back to us? So, I mean, that's the other looming piece. So this is just a small piece of the bigger iceberg.
I just want to, as well, the ramp was put in place in 1995, trying to get us to 100% funded. That's what the state legislature did with all of our pensions, but this is a shift. It's not, it's all coming out of Illinois taxpayers' pockets. The question is, is it coming out of my state income tax that has been raised, that I pay at 5%, or is it coming out of my property tax pocket? There's no new money here, right? It's a matter of who's collecting, okay? And it's a shift from the Illinois state taxpayer, from the income tax revenue stream, it's moving to the local property taxpayer. And 90% of our budget comes from the local property taxpayer. So, I mean, it's a little bit of a shell game.
But again, the burden is a little different, because the burden is on districts to convince taxpayers to pick up the cost of their retirement system. So, that's a big difference, and rather than on a state level. So, you know, keep that in mind.
And the alternative to convincing the property taxpayer to pick it up is, sounds like it's to lay off seven or eight teachers every year, 10 years in a row. And which, obviously, yes, will result in increasing class sizes.
Or elimination of programs.
And reduce programs, right.
Ms. Hirsch?
I did want to comment a little bit more on the bill that was on the floor. It passed the House of Representatives in Illinois last week, and the bill, the way that it was structured, the wording is, it's tied to PTAL, but if your EAV, EAV has increased over many years. We've benefited from that. We've been able to keep our tax rate level, but in our district, we've had increasing enrollment. And we project continued increasing enrollment. And really, one of the major levers of our expenditures is how many students do we have to educate? There are other things, but the biggest, simplest thing is how many students do we need to provide educational services for? There are some communities that are having decreases in enrollment, and I understand that they are now, you know, if you divide the total expenditures by the number of kids that they have, the cost per child is going up, and there are taxpayers that are feeling the burden of that. But I think the difference, this particular bill, was if the EAV declines, our tax levy is zeroed out. There is no new growth available to the district. We are in a district where we have enrollment increasing. That would be incredibly punitive to a district like ours, where our enrollment and our costs are still increasing. That particular bill was, you know, I viewed it as very threatening. Not only are we looming, you know, the looming threat of pensions being thrust upon the districts to fund as well, you're also cutting out our tax levy, and saying you do not have the right to even maintain the growth. PTAL is out the window. You know, the 5% or the CPI, which sever is less. So, there's significant threats, in my opinion, from all sides. Nobody has money, nobody has funds. We're trying to do the right thing, but we need to monitor these developments, I think, very closely. They're, have a direct impact on what educational opportunities we're going to continue to be able to offer our students.
Mr. McDonough?
More specifically, that, does that bill have a zero levy increase, or does it simply reduce the PTAL rate to, the PTAL rate increase to zero?
The bill, as I understood it, as it was worded, it was zero. If your EAV goes down, which our EAV has gone down in the last two years.
I understand the trigger, but then, does that also remove the new growth?
I don't think so, but I'm not sure.
All right. Do you know? So it doesn't affect new growth? It's just?
We can't have conversations without the mic, and we can only have them one at a time, please.
This is more detail than I think.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
One more?
One more. Mr. McDonough?
Moving from the serious and solemn to the fun, the green scene was Saturday night. I saw some of the Board members there, and it's one of the more fun things you do as a Board member. And the thing that the boosters are helping us out with is keeping the richness of the school experience alive despite budgetary difficulties, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn? By Ms. Hirsch, seconded by Mr. Collins. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Thank you. We are adjourned.